All right, good evening. Welcome to the Anacortes City Council meeting of June 5th, 2023. Mr. Hoagland, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter.
Present.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters. Ms. Cleland McGrath. Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubick.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I would like to move to excuse the absence of Mr. Walters this evening. Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Moulton, a second by Ms. Cleland McGrath to excuse Mr. Walters. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next, would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, I appreciate everybody joining us here in chambers, but we are going to move into an executive session for potential litigation per RCW 4230.110.1i. This will be for 15 minutes, and so we'll be back in 15 minutes. So thanks for your patience.[94.72]
And they kind of, and they go through that process. And it usually lasts about a year. And then it goes to a graduate house. And there's a couple of graduate houses that are a little more independent. Once they've kind of got on their feet and they're working towards either having a job or going to school or whatnot. So it was a really interesting presentation to hear what's, what's successful. They're supported by not only Skagit County, but also through some philanthropy, philanthropy and resident program fees, which is very affordable. About three hundred to five hundred dollars a month in rent. So it's, it's for folks that are kind of getting back on their feet and making sure that they can become independent. Credited through Washington Alliance for Quality Recovery Residences. And it was, it was just a really good presentation. We were happy to have them. It's, it's nice to know that this is available in our community, at least within our county. And so I think we probably will continue to talk with them and, and keep them on our list of available resources for folks.
Thanks. Ms. Moulton, is this Public Works Committee or did you have something to add to that?
Um, it's Public Works Committee.
Okay. Public Works Committee report. Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Public Works Committee met at 5:00 PM today and it was Mr. Young and I and some staff members as well, of course. We talked about the water treatment plant demolition, the old water treatment plant. And the contractor is currently obtaining the necessary permits from the Department of Ecology, which will take about thirty to forty days. And they expect substantial completion of the demolition by Christmas. So in 2023, we've been waiting for a long time, so that will be welcome. There have been, there's a small traffic safety issue on Twenty First Street between Commercial Avenue and Q Avenue by the San Juan Rehab and Care Center. Basically, there's, it's a little snug there for parking on both sides of the street. So we, the city will add no parking to the north side of Twenty First Street for safety, but that needs to be added to our parking code, which is about to be revised here. Then we had a great update from Tim Homan in Engineering about the road resurfacing that is going to happen, part of which we approved a contract a couple of weeks ago for part of that. And then in our agenda tonight is the chip seal that will be five miles worth. And some of it is in the residential area around Q Avenue and on Q Avenue. And then two point two miles of it is in Fidalgo Bay Road. And the great thing about the Fidalgo Bay Road part is that the county will help us do that. And when the county helps us, we pay them time and materials. And so essentially it's at cost. So that saves us a ton of money. So kudos to the Public Works Department for their ongoing relationship with the county. And then three miles of that, of that five point two miles will be in that residential area. And the thing with chip seals, it costs about twenty percent of what asphalt costs. And it enables us to extend the life of our roads by about seven years. So it's a great sort of interim measure to keep our roads in good shape so they don't completely fall into disrepair. And then we have a million dollars that are being spent on the, on asphalt and skyline. So that's about two point four million dollars and about four hundred thousand of that is, will be public works projects here and there filling in like Twenty Seventh Court. But the, this is going a great way. This is about five percent of all of our streets that are being resurfaced this year. So it's, they're really getting a lot of bang for their buck. So, great job. And that is it. Thanks.
Thanks. Next up is Personnel Committee. Ms. Cleland.
Thank you. So we had our Personnel Committee meeting today at 2:30 and Ms. Walters, no, not Ms. Walters, I'm sorry. Ms. Moulton and Mr. Young were with us. I was looking in either direction. And so we had a, we had a good meeting. We don't always have them, we don't have them too frequently, but there was some good discussion. The HR department has worked a ton on the personnel, personnel policy update. It's been over ten years since it's been updated. So we went through kind of a quick summary of the highlights, kind of cleaning up verbiage, using better terms, simplifying when it comes to collective bargaining positions versus contract independent, some of the FMLA and paid sick leave issues. And then simple, or kind of uniform, formalizing and simplifying our IT policy to include, you know, phone, computer, internet. It was pretty, pretty dated. So that was good and it'll come to council for a full presentation on June 12th. The depart, Personnel Department's been super busy. In 2023, they've had seventeen regular full-time hires, fourteen seasonal hires, six volunteer firefighters, and then sixteen student recreational assistants. So those are kind of the Parks and Rec basketball, soccer, kind of summer type activities. So that's a lot of folks getting hired. There's about twenty open positions. A number of those open positions are actually from the levy we passed earlier this year. So those will probably stay open a little bit longer towards the beginning of 2024. But it's nice in case we get good hi, good folks coming in the door. We want to make sure to get top quality. So they're, they're on the radar there. And then finally, we talked a little bit about some DEI training and looking for something to continue work with that. And then NeoGov, which is their software for the Personnel Department. Where right now it's pretty obsolete and this would kind of streamline a lot of the work that they do. Other than that, we talked a little bit about the civil service contractor. We've got a new person who's going to be handling that because our current, our previous one has retired. And simplif, or moving the performance review system onto an electronic format. Because that's where we're at now in 2023. And that's it.
Thank you. Any other council committee reports? All right. I will move on to item five, which is public comment. And this is an opportunity for any members of the public to address the council on anything that's not on our agenda. And you all have received the written public comment via the electronic packet and extra from Mr. Ewing. And I have signed up Marke Newman for public comment. You signed up, you get to go first. Name and where you live. You don't have to give your address, but just the city helps. And make sure the button's on, sorry. There's a little square in the middle. Steve, or Steve or Steve. There you go. Okay, now go.
Mayor and council, my name's Marke Newman and I live in Anacortes. And I was here a couple of months ago about the situation on T Avenue, which is, thank you very much, been taken care of. I go to the yacht club all the time and we now are starting to get a situation on Sixth. The, the people that are staying there on the north side are doing a great job of keeping things cleaned up and everything. So that's not, I don't see that as a huge issue, but we've got a new person that's just put a, it looks like the, a fifth wheel end. There's no truck to it. It's just planted there. And it's starting to creep, the, all of their stuff is starting to creep on the grass and on the sidewalk and stuff. So I just wanted you to be aware that you probably are, but it's, I don't want it to turn into a T Avenue. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else wish to address the council? Double check in participants online. Looking for a hand raised. We will move on to item number six, which is our consent agenda, items six A through E. Council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I move we approve the consent agenda, items A through E.
Second.
Okay. A motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Carter to approve consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We are on to item number seven, which is other business. This is Western Washington University Student Presentation, Recommended Comprehensive Plan Draft Amendments. And this is a presentation only, and I think Mr. Coleman's going to introduce this one. Mr. Coleman.
Thank you, mayor, council. So the city and several jurisdictions in Skagit County have been working with Western Washington University students to work on draft comprehensive plan amendments to address climate change. And so tonight, those students are here to give their presentations of the facts, just of their recommendations. Wanted to give a little bit of a background. This is not an action agenda item. This is proposed draft amendments that will help the city potentially address state requirements under House Bill 1181, which passed this year. Ironically, they had, the students had already been working on this because passed, or passed legislation that did not pass, but they were being proactive and came up with these recommendations for us. Just as a brief primer, the, the crux of 1181 is a change to the Growth Management Act that requires that our comprehensive plan address climate change and resiliency to ensure that the comprehensive plans, development regulations, and regional policies, plans under the Growth Management Act support, to adapt to mitigate, mitigate the effects of changing climate, support reductions in greenhouse gas emissions and per capita vehicle, per capita vehicle miles traveled, prepare for climate impact scenarios, foster resiliency to climate impacts and natural hazards, protect and enhance environmental, economic, and human health and safety, and advance environmental justice. So those are some of the topics that these proposed goals and policies that students were working on were intended to address. And so I'll pass it on to Dr. Tammy Leninga, who is the professor for these students. And let them introduce themselves.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm just going to pass it over to my students who did all of the work. So thanks for having us here this evening.
All right.
As you heard, we are students from Western Washington University. And we got the opportunity this quarter to partner with the city of Anacortes to make recommendations on the comprehensive plan in the future. We just wanted to thank you guys for this opportunity and we're excited for you to hear.
So we're going to do a fairly quick presentation. It'll only take about ten minutes, but first I'm just going to take us through a quick overview of some forecasted climate impacts that we'll have to manage here in Anacortes. And then we'll go over some recommendations for each chapter of the comprehensive plan. So first, this is all coming from the Skagit Climate Consortium. We can expect things like droughts, heat waves, severe storms and flooding, changes in ecosystem structure, wildfires out east, which can cause lots of health issues, especially for elderly and disabled populations, and sea level rise, which will undoubtedly impact this lovely downtown you have here that is so close to the ocean.
So the first chapter that we are making recommendations on is land use. And we are proposing goal LU12, which is to regulate, regulate off-street parking to address parking demands in a way that reduce reliance on automobiles and improves public health and safety, while also reducing greenhouse gas emissions, lowering construction costs, which will in turn reduce the cost of housing and increase affordable housing, and also create an attractive walkable environment, which will promote economic development throughout the city. Along with that goal, policy 12.1, which is achieving greater parking efficiency by allowing fewer parking spots per business, so businesses can share a parking lot, and policy 12.2, which is discouraging the development of major standalone park and ride facilities within Anacortes.
So the second chapter, which we will be making recommendations for was housing. And so initially, we propose goal H7, which would be promoting and implementing sustainable and climate-oriented development. And so the intention of this goal would be, would be to develop and implement regulations, creating green energy and sustainability standards that must be met for new homes and buildings to be built. And so underneath this goal, we found three policies. First, 7.1, which is to encourage climate change-oriented innovation in residential design, construction, and technology, which was found from Seattle's Comprehensive Plan. Also, policy 7.2, which is to implement, implement regulations to conserve water, energy, and materials while reducing greenhouse gas emissions and otherwise limiting environmental and health impacts. Also, policy 7.3 would be consider using a sustainability rating system when designing housing developments and neighborhoods, which was found from Bellingham's Comprehensive Plan. One example of this is in New York City, the Building Energy Efficiency Rating System, where they use an energy star score to give a numeric value to multiple different variables, which, which give an exact, which give, excuse me, an exact numeric score to see how sustainably built new development is. The third chapter, which we looked into, was economic development. And so underneath goal ED1, which is a balanced economy, we propose the addition of policy ED 1.15, which is to encourage the use of life cycle assessment tools when analyzing development prospects to provide a fuller dimension and analysis of the long-term social and environmental costs and benefits of projects. Also, underneath goal ED2, which is retail and commercial, we propose the addition of policy ED 2.15, which is state and local governments, metropolitan planning organizations, and other regional and local agencies should pursue a policy of intentional densification of urban spaces with good multimodal connections among mixed-use, commercial, low-impact employment in diverse housing areas. Third, underneath the goal ED6, which is provide education and training, we propose the addition of goal policy ED 6.5, which is to support job training for green-collar jobs and the equitable transition to renewal energy and a sustainable economy while using comprehensive planning to designate suitable areas for small, innovative, green businesses, and to shift economic development and workforce training programs to promote local jobs and sustainable business. All three of these were found from the APA Climate Change Policy Guide. The next chapter, which we looked into, was environment and conservation. And underneath goal EC2, which is marine waters and shorelines, we propose the addition of policy EC 2.7, which would be to promote solutions that use natural systems, mimic natural processes, or work synergistically with traditional approaches to protect our floodplains and watersheds. Also, underneath goal EC8, which is sustainability, we propose policy EC 8.13, which is to require a biannual emission report to allow the city to track its emissions improvements. And the next chapter, which we looked into, was parks, recreation, and open spaces, where first we added to goal PR1, parks and recreation facilities. We propose policy PR 1.11, or this could be an updated PR 1.1, which is to continue to expand the city's park holdings and open space opportunities with special emphasis on serving urban centers and urban villages that are home to marginalized populations and areas that have been traditionally underserved. And under goal PR4, community engagement, we propose policy PR 4.6, which would be to provide supplementary emphasis on supplying information for typically underrepresented or disadvantaged communities regarding community events, et cetera. Lastly, under goal PR7, environmental stewardship, we propose policy PR 7.12, which is to identify and implement solutions and strategies for coastal flood protection where feasible and practicable to manage the impacts of coastal storm surge and high tide flooding, which was found from New York City's Comprehensive Waterfront Plan. And along with the recommendation of this policy, we recommend potentially developing Anacortes' own comprehensive waterfront plan.
So the next chapter is transportation. And we propose revising policy T220 to retrofit all local roadways to have bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, not just new development. And we also recommend revising policy T41 to incorporate hydraulic climate impacts into the design of water crossing structures for fish passages and habitat quality. And we also propose revising policy T42 to ensure that infrastructure is improving and also able to withstand and recover from extreme weather events that will be worsened from climate change. And also designing roads and railroads that have the least possible adverse effect on shorelines and account for sea level projections. Along with that, we propose to add T211, which is to support the development of non-motorized transportation networks such as shoulders, sidewalks, trails, and bikeways that connect neighborhoods with schools, green spaces, urban services, and other neighbor, neighborhoods in Anacortes. And policies A through G are just details in how to promote non-automobile transportation.
On to capital facilities. This also kind of goes into transportation. I propose developing a Green Streets Toolbox. This would basically be kind of a plan for all of your future roads, which would include sidewalks, bike lanes, wheelchair access, curb cuts, road verges, bioswells, things that would help mitigate storm surges and flooding. Also adding to the first goal of capital facilities, supporting existing development and future growth, protecting culturally significant capital facilities that are close to the shore through shoreline hardening and building elevation and floodproofing wherever possible. And then as part of goal CF3, correcting deficiencies, we propose policy CF3.4, which would essentially be working together with Native American tribes. I think here it would be the Swinimish. Working with them to protect archaeological sites and other historically important areas. And then finally, for utilities, adding to goal U2, sustainable utility infrastructure, we suggest monitoring emissions from utility providers. This would help you get a better sense of how many, how much greenhouse gas the city is emitting. Also, for the same goal, developing design standards that require considering resilience in your utility systems. And then finally, in sustainable water policy, evaluating the long-term adequacy of your water delivery infrastructure, making sure it is, it is going to be able to handle different hydrological problems such as flooding, high tides, things that change the water level, and just making sure your system will be resilient in case of storms and other climate impacts. So thank you so much. We don't have, we might not have a whole lot of time for questions or comments, but we will be sending a full memo with all of our recommendations by the end of the week. If you have any questions or comments, we'd really love to hear it, or you can email us. But yeah, thank, thank you so much. We really appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Well, thank you so much for coming and, and presenting the information. It's great. I, I'm a little selfish when it comes to this stuff because I'm happy that I'm not paying some high-paid consultants to, to tell us this information as we're, no offense, but appreciate that work that, that, because we're going to start our plan 2025, right? Is when we need to start seriously on our comprehensive plan. So it's a good primer to get us started as we go through this. So appreciate the work you all put into this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, yeah, questions, comments. Mr. Young and then Ms. Moulton, I, sorry.
Just wanted to thank you for a wonderful presentation. I am excited to see your faces. And you know, just the scope of the issues that you addressed, you know, was really significant, significant in a variety of fashions, because it's a holistic view for how we move forward. So I wanted to let you know how much I appreciate it. Stellar jobs of presenting, and I'm just glad you're here and thank you very much.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes, I'm going to echo Mr. Young and thank you for your time and hard work on this and all your suggestions, your ideas, both the high-level and then the more detailed. And I look forward to spending more time with this and looking at it, especially as Mayor Miller said, we'll be updating our plan. And I think that this will be really helpful to us. So thanks for reaching out and I hope we can continue to communicate with you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Thank you. All right. We are on to item 7B. This is Alternative Response Team. And I don't know if Chief Harris or Mr. Monrad, if you're gonna, all right, looks like you drew that great, the good straw.
I drew the whatever straw it might be.
All right, Mr. Monrad, you're up then.
All right. Let me pull up my dazzling PowerPoint here. Okay. Well, good evening, mayor and council audience chiefs, students. Thank you for your presentation. My name is Steve Monrad. I'm the Community Paramedic with the Anacortes Fire Department. I'm going to do a little bit of a presentation this evening, kind of a recap of what our program's been doing for the last nearly two years, as well as a bit of a presentation about the Alternative Response Team, which we're going on six months with that. So I'm going to have, I'm going to introduce the team here in a little bit and also give you plenty of time to have any, if you have any questions or comments for us. So the Community Paramedic Program, as you recall, was implemented July 1 of 2021. So we're just short of, of two years and it's been quite a, quite an adventure. The goal of the program was to reduce 911 calls, reduce emergency department visits, and overall just to improve quality of life for people in our community who needed a little extra assistance. This program is funded in partnership with Island Health. They, we are 50/50 partners, the city and the hospital. So Island Health has been a huge partner in this. And in the nearly two years, enrolled a total of eighty-six patients since we've, we've started this. And I will use the term patient and client interchangeably. So if you hear we use one or the other, I'm referring to the same folks, people that the program serves. And year-to-date, I'm right at twenty-seven patients that I've enrolled in 2023. You might remember from previous reports that I break down all of the patients that I serve into different categories. And you'll notice that the math doesn't all add up to 100%. And that's because one individual might tick more than one box. So you might have somebody that, that, that is in all of those categories. And when we began this, I really wasn't surprised, and I continue to not be surprised, to see where, where our, our issues lie in this community. And this next graphic is just a little bit better of a visual to show that eighty-five percent of the folks that are enrolled in, in my program are aging and disabled with medical issues and risk of falling, followed by behavioral health, homeless, and substance use issues. I receive referrals from several different sources. And you'll notice from this chart here that a majority of the referrals that I receive come from our crews at Anacortes Fire. Behind that is the hospital. And then high utilizers, which those are people that I identify by tracking their calls to 911 through our electronic health records program. So I enroll those folks public or just when someone from the general public or another city department or anybody calls me and is concerned about an individual. That's where those referrals come through. Outreach, that's a category I added when we started the community outreach. Those are folks that we encounter that, that are enrolled. Those are folks that we encounter that are enrolled through those activities. And you'll see I've had a few people who have enrolled themselves. And those are, those are folks who, example is somebody I was working with, a family member, and they pulled me aside after the visit and was concerned, some issues they were dealing with, and I was able to assist them with some resources and enrolled them as a patient in the program. And then, of course, family, that speaks for itself. Family members who reach out to me because they're concerned about their loved ones. And just another visual to show just kind of the, the breakdown of where the referrals come from. Some of the numbers here, I almost, maybe a little bit skewed because some, some folks I get multiple referrals from. That, that 21% from the hospital isn't quite accurate because there's plenty of people that our crews are really proactive about referring to me, and the next day, the phone rings and it's the ER or the floor at the hospital reaching out about a patient. So, I get multiple referrals on, on individual patients. Again, one of the big goals of this program is reducing calls. So, in recapping 2022, enrolled 42 patients, and in that cohort of 42 patients, their calls prior to, these are 911 calls to enrollment, were 201. After enrollment, down to 96. So, we saw a 52% reduction in the calls for that group of people. Now, since we launched this program, again, we've enrolled 86 people. Prior to enrollment, our calls were at 301. After enrollment, 219. So, that shows a 27% reduction, but there's something there that, there, we have, we have a particular, one patient who is an outlier that's created a lot more calls. In fact, 75. And when I back that one individual patient out just to, to display the, the impact one individual can make, you can see that we have a 50% reduction. And that's been pretty consistent over time, about 50% reduction in calls with people who are enrolled. So, that's kind of what I have to give you, summing up my program since, for 2022. Now, I want to kind of transition into our Alternative Response Team. And this is a team that we formed back in January 2023 after we were awarded a grant from the Association of Washington Cities. The grant funds the program through June of this year. Good news is, though, is we just reapplied for grant renewal, and it will be for one year. We scored really well on the last time, and fingers crossed that we'll do the same. But, so, we have applied for renewed grant funding, which will be for one year. It is a partnership of Anacortes Fire Department, Anacortes Police Department, and the Anacortes Family Center. And through the Family Center, we get a Resource Navigator and a Behavioral Health Specialist. And I'm going to introduce them in just a minute, and let, let them tell you a little bit about what they do. So, in, since, well, we began the program in January, we really didn't get up and running until February because they, they basically awarded the grant and said, "Start this program now." And, and I would say we were pretty quick at getting things going. We were able to contract with the Family Center. We were able to contract with the team. But in that time, since February, we've served 88 distinct clients with resources for housing, substance use, behavioral health, and healthcare, and other support for all kinds of other needs, whether that's gas cards, bus passes, clothing, vouchers to do laundry, ferry tickets, obtaining IDs, job applications, establishing primary care physicians, and, and just tons and tons of referrals to other resources to, to help these folks. Our main functions of the Response Team are community outreach. That's accomplished with, with the Anacortes Police Department and myself and Ashley. We do at least weekly outreach with unhoused folks here in town. Case management, that's really kind of Ashley's wheelhouse, working with these folks to, to sit down and go through the paperwork and all the processes to get housing and other resources set up. Substance use, behavioral health assessment and counseling, that's Jennifer's wheelhouse there. And then the Community Paramedic visits, that's what yours truly is for. So, at this time, I'd like you to actually meet the folks that are doing the work. You've already met me, and you've listened to me talk long enough, but I'd like to introduce Ashley Wick and Jennifer Paddock.
Yes, I'll go first. My name is Ashley Wick, and I work at the Anacortes Family Center. So, within my title of Resource Navigator, my scope of work includes usually weekly homeless outreach trips, supporting clients by completing housing applications, attaining legal documentation, and basically, in general, just connecting them with whatever they need at that moment in time. And really, it changes, it changes hourly, it changes daily, it changes weekly. So, our job is to just kind of meet them where they're at and be able to provide what it is that they need at that moment. Every Tuesday, usually, in the morning, our, our Alternative Outreach Team, which includes myself, Steve, and Jennifer, meet for about an hour, and we discuss and update all of our clients and their treatment plans, how to best serve them for the upcoming week. Within that meeting, either Steve or myself will discuss possible referrals to Jennifer, who's our SUDP and mental health treatment professional. And as of last Friday, we have now a total of 12 graduated clients, which is a really exciting, really exciting deal. We thought just, well, Steve thought, that it might be beneficial for you all to hear just a little bit more of a detailed, just, I guess, I don't know, like a case-by-case story, kind of a case study for some of those clients. So, I'll just, I'm going to go, go through some of those graduates. Most recently, last Friday, as of May 31st, a female in her mid-40s signed a lease for a room in Mount Vernon, and AFC was able, Anacortes Family Center was able to pay for her first in last month's rent deposit. She's now working full-time here in town, and she'll be moving into her new apartment this coming Monday, today. On March 2nd, we had a veteran who had been living on T Avenue for close to four and a half years. He was in his mid-50s, and with the help of all of the outreach efforts, and I want to specify, it's not just myself, I also, my partner is Nina, and Nina's absolutely amazing. She's not here tonight, but she had a huge part of this client. I kind of took the baton for the last part of the race, but this particular client had been living on T Avenue for close to five years, and he was given something called a VASH voucher. So, it's a Veterans, Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing voucher, and so he's now living in his own apartment in Mount Vernon, and he's, he actually just came into the office last week, and he's doing absolutely amazing. On April 18th, we had another veteran who had been living on T Avenue for almost a year. After connecting him with Skagit Vets Connect in Mount Vernon and completing coordinated entry, he's now at the Burlington First Steps, and he's being case managed, waiting for more permanent housing, is probably also going to be getting a VASH voucher. On April 7th, we had a female in her early 50s. She was one of our Salvation Army Cold Weather Shelter clients. She now is working full-time in Mount Vernon with her own studio apartment, and she is on all of her medications, and she's doing absolutely phenomenal. Two weeks ago, on May 23rd, we had a client who is a male in his 50s. He came into our program by way of motel voucher, and after working with him for three months, he was able to sign a year lease with Catholic Community Services' new 72-bed building called Martha's Place. AFC paid his first and last move-in deposits. He's now in his own one-bedroom corner unit apartment on the, on the second floor. The best part is, is a week prior to moving into that unit, he actually got hired on full-time at a job, so he's like just a couple blocks walking distance from where he's living, which is, is pretty cool. At this point in time, we have two other clients, a mother and a daughter. They are on, they are one, so I guess they're second on the waiting list for a two-bedroom apartment. And there's also similarly, we have quite a few other clients who, they're like right on the brink of graduating. They're like a couple slots away, they're a couple, you know, signatures away. I would say, give us another six months, we're probably going to have another good handful of graduates. So, it has been my pleasure to share just a snippet of what we do, and I will pass the mic off to Jennifer Paddock, who is our Substance Use Disorder Professional.
Hello. Thank you for allowing us to report how this is going. As a community member myself here in Anacortes for 25 years, I'm very excited with this project and being able to be part of it myself. So, I am a Master's Addiction Counselor, nationally certified, also state-certified Substance Use Disorder Professional. Unlike some other professionals in the field, I can meet individually with people as a master's degree-level therapist can outside of a treatment agency. So, under that, I have contracted with Anacortes Family Center to provide services for this project. And at this point, probably about 75% of the referrals I'm getting from our navigator, from Ashley and Nina, are people who are showing up to work with me. And for the most part, their attendance is consistent, about equal to what I do, work with people privately and who shows up for that. Everybody who comes in receives what we call a WASBRT screening. That's our evidence-based screening, brief intervention, and referral to treatment. Washington adopted that back in 2006, Washington State did, when I was working for the Division of Alcohol and Substance Abuse. So, I'm very familiar with it and excited to be able to do it. There's short screenings and tell-me information that helps discern between, am I primarily looking at substance use or primarily looking at mental health issues, which helps me know which direction to go from there. As of now, all eight people I have recommended for a full comprehensive Substance Use Disorder evaluation, which I use the Diagnostic Statistical Manual of Mental Health Disorders, also referred to as the DSM, from the American Psychological Association, and the, what we call ASAM, American Society for Addiction Medicine, are two screening tools that help me diagnose based in the psychiatric world and in the medical world. All eight people who've been referred to me have completed the Substance Use Evaluations. From there, based on my recommendations, some have had to wait quite a while to get into treatment, so I just continue to fold them into my practice and meet with them individually because we have that flexibility to do that. So, I generally get to work with those people around six to eight weeks and do continued screening, evaluation, and counseling, giving tools and skills that I normally would in any treatment-type setting for Substance Use Disorder or mental health services. So, of that so far, I'd say about 96%, I can think of maybe one person, I'm not quite sure where they went with it, but 96% of the people I'm working with are able to show the skills and the tools that I'm putting forward. They can demonstrate those, whether their refusal skills of being offered substances or, because I also look at gambling as an addiction, they're not spending their food cards, trading them to somebody for money and buying lottery tickets, and so, looking at those types of changes in their behavior and thinking patterns that show progress. The six to eight weeks I have with them is not a lot of time comparatively to how long I often meet with people in, in counseling practice, but they show up, which I'm really happy to see. They stay engaged and often do their assignments and do homework that I give during the week. So, I'm really happy to see that and try to tell my own community members, that's what I'm experiencing firsthand, is that, that the people we're working with in this project are engaging in, in counseling and in the changes that we're recommending to improve their lives and increase their self-sufficiency. So, any questions about what I do?
Questions from Council, Mr. Young?
Yes. No, thank you very much. You know, I think it's just so important that we begin to address at a deeper level these issues that we all are being confronted with. I think we've neglected the urgency, and I think that what's happening right now, from what I'm seeing and hearing, is a beautiful thing. The question I would have, and I believe I already have the answer, but I think it's important to articulate, particularly as we give numbers out and talk about the people that are helping, people that are looking for services and getting them, and as you pointed out, consistently looking forward to the help. Do you think that the amount of services that we're currently offering is meeting, coming anywhere near meeting our need? And I guess what I'm trying to get to is that I know you're working incredibly hard to service the people that are there, you know, but the hole is huge. And, you know, and there are things that I think as we continue to tell those stories of how we're being successful, how the programs we're implementing is reaching the very people we want and lives are being changed, I think it's also important to keep the, the opportunity to increase, to show that it's meriting, and then also the dollars that are being spent is being well-spent, and we're coming out with what we want.
Yeah, I certainly think it's well worth the outcomes that I'm seeing. Unfortunately, I have carved out eight hours in a given week of my private practice, and I can't give more than that. And so, more service providers, which I know is very difficult right now in the behavioral health field, combining mental health and substance use disorder. Yeah, there's certainly a shortage of the available services in our town and everywhere.
But you're seeing, you're seeing an increase, a definite need that there's room for more if we could.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to make a plug too for Alan Mura. Glad you were able to meet with him. Wonderful man. He's actually been doing that since 2006 when I was at the state. It's nice to hear that he's really expanded so much and fills a big gap, which is recovery. People who are coming out of treatment, returning to the environments, and need that support once they're back in their environments that sent them to treatment in the first place. So, I'm glad to hear you went there. Thanks again.
Anything to wrap up there, Steve?
No, I was just going to say thank you and, and offer you any opportunity with any questions you might have. And just a comment that I've, you know, we've had not a whole lot of time. We started this in February, but I have really learned a lot from these two in, in that short time. Really, it's been a great experience.
Well, again, just coming from the, you know, getting the Community Paramedic started up and, and, you know, realizing that already getting great results, and then adding this particular key element of it, I think we're already seeing some fantastic results. So, I appreciate Island Health's partnership. I appreciate the council's support for the Community Paramedic Program, and I'm confident we're going to see that grant again come through.
I really, I really hope so. And, and one of the things that I learned right away from this is what And, and, uh, one of the things that I learned right away from this is what makes this whole thing work is the partnerships, whether it's with, with Island Health or with the family center or all the other organizations that, that we work really closely with, that is, that is crucial to making this thing.
Mayor, can I add one more thing?
Yeah, Mr. Young.
Thank you. Coming from a family of, um, health professionals, my spouse, um, docked at Island for a long time and, you know, 30 years later, you know, the, the stories that we heard or I heard in the internal struggle to try to address some of these issues that you guys are addressing is so beautiful because it's a, you know, hospitals are having a difficult time in so many ways and the partnerships like this allows the people that are coming to the hospital to be helped, but those people that are out there. So I, you know, I, I just wanted to applaud the effort, you know, it warms my heart. One, because, you know, just knowing the stories that I do of people being, um, in an emergency room for almost weeks, not able to get help and what can the hospital do? It, it's nothing that they can do, they can't send you out. So it's, it's a catch-22 where costs are rising and it's just a hard thing. And, and the services that this program, as well as the work that you guys do, is such a help for them and us because at one way or another, we still pay the bill. So why not make this investment in something that's really helpful and we can tangibly see the results? So I applaud you.
Anybody else? Ms. Cleveland? Sorry, I can't see your button.
Yeah, I just, as, as someone who gets, has the pleasure of meeting with you all on a regular basis and being able to actually see you guys out, um, meeting with folks in the community, I just think it's, I, I really appreciate the work you do. It, it's not only that we have these positions, but it's that you three are in those positions with your compassion and your skillset and your partnerships amongst the three of you and the rest of the support, um, of organizations. It's an emotionally draining, um, service that you all do. So I just want you guys to know that thank you from the community, um, and the fact that you guys have to show up and meet with folks and sometimes it's a good day and sometimes it's not their best day, um, but that you figure out what you can offer them while still hot, setting some expectations and goals so that you, so that you are a person, you are a resource, but also, um, encouraging them in the, in a, in a productive direction. And I think that's a really hard, um, thing to weave together. So just, I just really appreciate you guys and I hope that the rest of the community, you know, a lot of this is kind of confidential work and, um, you want to have, uh, be discreet about it, but it's been really incredible to see this, so thank you.
Well said.
Well, thanks for that. I was just going to make a comment. You, you mentioned, uh, you know, I, I've been a paramedic for 27 years now and people don't call paramedics when they're having a good day. Um, but the difference about this is I actually do get to experience some good days with people. So it's, 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 it's a little bit different than, than back when I was on the rig.
All right. Well, thank you again so much. We appreciate the service. Okay, we are on to item number 7C. This is a contract award, 2023 asphalt pre-level chip seal preparation project discussion, possible action, Mr. Hash.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Henry Hash, Public Works. We are here before you to award the contract. Um, if you remember, a couple of weeks ago, we were here, uh, to ask for approval for chip sealing contract. This is a follow-up and the questions came up at that meeting as well, because chip sealing does not have leveling ability. This is just to level all the roads that are scheduled and programmed for chip sealing. We went out to bed, the beds were open on May 25th. We had three beds, really good beds. Our engineering estimate was about $750,000 and the low bid was $586,540 by J B Asphalt. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Hash? I know the contract was in the packet. All right, must have been self-explanatory. And any potential motions then from council?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young. Or an actual motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that City Council authorize the mayor to sign contract 23-140-T R N-002 with J B Asphalt paving in the amount of $586,540 to perform the 2023 asphalt pre-level chip seal preparation project.
Simultaneous second. I have a motion by Mr. Young and a second by Ms. Hubick to approve the, uh, contract as presented. Mr. Hoagland, would you, any additional discussion? Mr. Hoagland, will you take the vote, please?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougall?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're on to our, uh,
Thank you.
final item. Thank you, Mr. Hash. Uh, item 7D, this is a settlement agreement, growth management hearing board case number 2220004, and this is Ms. Swetnum. Ms. Swetnum, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, and members of council, members of the audience. Uh, so in your packet and before you tonight is a settlement agreement, which would resolve the, an appeal filed by Ian Muntz against the city and the Western Washington Growth Management Hearings Board, which is case number 2220004. Uh, the basis of Mr. Muntz's appeal was an objection to a particular section in City Ordinance 4025, which was adopted under order of the Growth Management Hearings Board pursuant to a previous appeal of the city's critical areas ordinance. So the, uh, the, the settlement agreement that's in your packet proposes to change the language in section 1970040B, uh, which is a, a subsection related to exempt activities within critical areas, back to the language as it existed before the adoption of ordinance 4025. And the, kind of the essence of that change would, uh, would change the language back to, uh, saying that exempt activities should minimize disturbance in, uh, critical areas as opposed to minimizing harm to critical areas. Uh, so I just wanted to mention that I've worked and talked extensively with staff about whether we felt that change was legally significant and whether that would, um, you know, change the city's ability to take enforcement action to protect critical areas. And our sense was that it did not, and so staff is recommending approval of the settlement agreement that's in the packet. Um, in terms of mechanics, if the settlement agreement's adopted by council, ratified the mayor's signature, uh, the city would have to adopt the ordinance to correct the language within 90 days. And then within five days of adoption of that ordinance, Mr. Muntz would withdraw his appeal with prejudice and that case would be, would be resolved. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right, council, any questions for Ms. Swetnum? Any points you want to clarify? So the right, the action is, if you want to make a motion, is to ratify my signature on the settlement agreement and like, like Ms. Swetnum said, 90 days, we'll have to update the language in the code. Uh, we'll entertain a motion any, either way.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
I, I make a motion that we ratify the mayor's signature on the settlement agreement in the matter of Ian Muntz versus the city of Anacortes.
Mr. Young.
I second that motion.
Okay. So got a motion by Ms. Hubick and a second by Mr. Young to ratify my signature on the settlement agreement, uh, from the matter of Ian Muntz versus the city of Anacortes. Any additional discussion? Okay, Mr. Hoagland, take the vote, please.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
No.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Carter? Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let us see, there being no further business before the Anacortes City Council, I will adjourn the meeting of 5 June. Thank you. Good night.